All right, me and you called to order. We had a roll call at your leisure, Caleb. Ping, President. That's a dog. Marubi is gone. Johnson here, Kevin here, and Fisher here. So we're here to do the, uh, talk about the Columbia Falls Housing Assessment. And it sounds like we're gonna start off with the presenter that I assume they're on Zoom up there.
Correct.
Yes, you ready?
Already, you are.
Okay, so I wasn't sure if, um, Eric was gonna be introducing us or not. Um, so. Up to him.
Good, we'd like to.
You, you go ahead, Wendy, and introduce your team, um, to the board.
Okay, that works. Yeah, so I am Wendy Sullivan. I'm with WSW Consulting, and I wanna say thank you. Thank you for, um, hosting this meeting and thank you for allowing us to help you guys figure out, um, your housing issues and your planning moving forward. Um, I know Montana threw a bit of a loop at you with some of the new legislation, so you know, hopefully we can help you work through that too. Um, anyway, uh, I just wanted to take a moment. I'll introduce myself, um, each of our team members. Sarah McLean and Andrew Coburn is also on the call. We have a short, um, or just a very simple PowerPoint to help us step through the agenda and what we want to achieve today. Um, but just really quick, I am with WSW Consulting. I've been doing this type of work, uh, community planning and, uh, workforce and resident housing for, I hate to say, over twenty-five years. Um, and I, uh, got my start in Blaine County, Idaho, and then I actually grew up in Colorado, moved back to Colorado, um, got ingrained there through a private consulting firm, mostly in mountain resort and resort impacted and rural communities. Um, and since then branched out on my own and, uh, in twenty-eleven, and so primarily focus Colorado, Wyoming, Montana, um, California and Idaho, um, so mostly the western states. And we've done a lot of work in the Whitefish area. I'm very familiar with at least the interactions and the interplays of the markets between, uh, you guys and Whitefish and all of that. So actually, we're very excited to move a little bit down the valley and, and get more immersed in your community as well. So with that, I'll let, uh, Sarah, you wanna introduce yourself and then Andrew will follow.
Thanks, Wendy, and, um, you know, we're really excited to be diving into this project. Um, I have not personally worked on in Montana before, but I was very excited that Wendy was willing to engage me on this team. Um, I am Sarah McLean with Western Spaces, and I've been working in the housing realm since about the mid-two thousands. Um, Wendy actually was the first one that introduced me to workforce housing and taught me a lot of what I know, uh, so I appreciate that. And, um, primarily focused on needs assessments and housing strategies.
Excellent, and, uh, good evening, everybody. Andrew Coburn with Urban Rural Continuum. Uh, I'm gonna be working as an analyst on this project, um, helping with, um, a lot of the data collection and analysis, some of the draft reporting and format, uh, and I've had the good fortune of, uh, working in the housing realm now for many years with, um, Wendy and Sarah, and I'm super excited to be working in the valley. Uh, I actually went to school in Montana, and my family's been in the valley, uh, for about twenty years now, so, um, very excited to be working, um, with all of you and, uh, looking forward to the conversation.
Great, thanks. And so, before we begin, uh, can we just kinda go around the table, um, so that we know who all of you are?
Here, I get the, yeah, you wanna start? I'll go this way.
Hi, my name is Sam Gattler. Uh, I've been a member of the Columbia Falls Planning Board, I guess, now five, six years or so, and then I'm newest commission here as of late. Native, native to Columbia Falls, uh, though I have lived in Colorado and LA and traveled much of the world before coming.
I'm Darren Fisher. I'm a chair of this, uh, committee. Um, previously, I spent about twelve years on the city council here in town, and I'm also a local business owner and my family, I, I live in town.
Hi, I'm Justin Ping. I'm pretty new to Columbia Falls. My wife and I have been here for just over a year now, but, uh, we spent a fair amount of time on Colorado, almost ten years on the western slope in Carbondale, if you're familiar with that, and, uh, have been on several different organizations, just made many things like this and that area.
I'm Mark Johnson. I'm new to the commission, uh, for Columbia Falls, uh, lived in Columbia Falls for the last thirty years now, so.
I'm Caleb Sobchak. I'm the Building Planning and Public Works Clerk for the City of Columbia Falls.
I'm Mark Tribe. I'm the, uh, interim city manager for Columbia Falls, uh, as of Monday, and, uh, so I'll, uh, I'll be here for a few months to get some projects done and maybe hiring a permanent city manager as a plan.
Great, good to have you.
Eric Mokayi, uh, consulting planner for the City of Columbia Falls.
And, uh, Justin Greck, city attorney for Columbia Falls.
All right. Great, well, thank you. Um, and with that, Sarah, are you gonna, do you wanna run the PowerPoint or you want me to?
Um, I'm happy to share if I have permission here. Share. Oops, sorry about that. There we go.
Um, while they're setting up, just a reminder to the audience, they're gonna go through the whole PowerPoint presentation, and there is time for visitor and public comments, um, and question at the end of this session, just to be clear, so take some notes, and, uh, we can come back to any questions later. Just wanna make sure you know that.
Great, perfect. Yeah, so, um, actually, if you wanna move to the agenda, that'll be perfect. So, um, basically, yeah, we're just gonna, I think we have about an hour here. Um, so we just did introductions. We wanna step through the overview of a study purpose and the process that we've proposed. We wanna get, um, some of your feedback to confirm the study goals and outcomes, what you really wanna see come out of this process and what you need as a community regarding to your housing needs and, and understanding your dynamics. Discuss roles, tasks, and timing related to, uh, some of the local data needs that we're gonna need for the study. Interviews we will be conducting, um, we have proposed an employer survey. We will talk a little bit about that. Um, some of the planned meetings and deliverables that we have as part of this process, um, and, you know, really intending to be somewhat interactive and get your feedback as well. But we'll also talk about what we expect from you guys, um, because we need local assistance. It'd be great. Um, and then we'll just step through next steps, and then, um, I think there's ten minutes reserved for public comment, so. So, basically, okay.
I don't know if you, Wendy, can you please make the active slide full screen? We're just seeing, uh, that slide.
With it, okay. Sure, give me a sec. Let me, uh, view it as a slideshow. Is that better?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Better for me too.
All right, good, good.
Okay, cool. Um, and so, basically, this, uh, what we're titling this or what this is called, um, came from the RFP, uh, but it's a comprehensive affordable housing study and analysis, uh, proposing to evaluate the community economy and housing market to determine local resident and employee housing needs across the entire income spectrum. So everything, um, from extremely low income up through, uh, market rate and what that's providing as well. So in essence, what we do is we take a look at what the market's providing, at what it's not, where those gaps are, and then, you know, help you, uh, then think about, you know, how can we start doing things in our community to address some of these gaps? In a nutshell, and so, and then, you know, the purpose of this, of course, is to comply with SB three-eight-two, so there are some nuances in here that we've pulled in, um, to address the state legislation. Um, and in this, just FYI, affordable means, uh, are, it, it doesn't mean just low income. It just, affordable simply refers to household spending no more than thirty percent of their gross income on housing payment. So even households earning, you know, over two-hundred thousand dollars a year might spend over thirty percent of their income on their housing payment, you know, so it's, it's an entire spectrum that we're looking at here. Next slide. And so we've proposed a study to contain several different components. You know, obviously, we'll be looking at the demographics of your community. Um, you know, getting a, a sense of the jobs and the interactions, you know, your economy, also taking a look at commuting patterns. Um, we know there's a lot of in and out commuting, you know, both of residents that are leaving the area for jobs in Whitefish or Kalispell or other, other regions. And, um, and then, uh, also, you know, people coming into your community for work, et cetera. Um, we'll take a look at the housing inventory, what you currently have on the market, as well as anything in the pipeline and what's gonna be coming down. I know you have some partnerships that you're currently working on, and, um, obviously, we'll look into that too. Um, take a look at the housing market, significant changes, obviously, in the past and especially recent past. Um, and so we'll be taking a look at that, where your housing prices are, availability, et cetera. Um, housing problems in terms of, you know, can people afford, you know, what they're in, et cetera. Um, take a look at the current housing needs and projected demand, um, in the future. Again, this will be tied also to some of the state legislation requirements. I think they're looking for twenty-year population projections, for example. So we will frame this in both a near-term sort of actionable current housing needs and, and then, um, you know, the longer term that's, that's required by the state. Um, take a look at existing housing resources, land and opportunities in your community, again, keeping the state legislation in mind, um, you know, that does require that you take a look at land opportunities in and around your community to address needs and then, um, and figure out what you can and can't do, basically. Um, and then conclusions and recommendations in line with that. So in a nutshell, what all of this stuff that we're looking at is gonna do is basically help you understand how much housing you need in your community, both to meet current deficiencies and future needs. Um, at what price point, um, you know, for which income levels, and for whom, for ownership, for rental, et cetera. Right? And so, in looking at this, there's, there's considerations to be made, and we, um, have been thinking about the best, you know, or a good study area for your community that's going to help us not only understand just what your municipal boundaries and what's going on there requires, but also the interaction, like I said, of the job market and housing market and other factors influencing what is going on in your community. And so, in looking at that and then also paying attention to the state legislation, which says that you really need to be looking at this in areas that, quote, might be annexed, um, into the municipality over the next twenty years. Um, so that I know that's rather ambitious, um, but keeping all of this in mind, what we would like to do or what we're proposing to do is to provide you data both on the municipality itself, Columbia Falls, um, as well as the zip code area. And then that will actually also pair well with the information from the current Whitefish Housing Need Study, which looks at the entire zip code area around Whitefish. And so what that's gonna do is give you a good picture of really what's going on in that whole region and how it's affecting where you're at as a community. And so I think, you know, we wanted to lay that out and just see if you had any questions or comments or concerns potentially about that, and obviously, we can take that in, into consideration, um, you know, and potentially refine what we're thinking.
Any questions from the board here to think then? You know, questions in the board room. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, there's a little bit of an echo, so it might be a little hard at times for me to hear you. Did you say to just go ahead?
Yes, go ahead. I'll try to enunciate well. We have no questions at this time.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, next slide. Um, and so in the study process, like I said, there's, this is gonna be a combination of collecting secondary data, which is data that's available, you know, through the census, the American Community Survey, you know, uh, business sources, et cetera. Um, we are also proposing quite a bit of what we call primary research to really understand and ground that secondary data in your community so that we understand what the trends are telling us and what's happening on the ground as far as those are concerned. And so we have proposed an employer survey, and, uh, Sarah will talk to that a little bit later. Um, and we're proposing to get that out mid-October through about early to mid-November. Um, we will be doing several interviews, um, beginning in September. Um, obviously, all of this data analysis, um, we'll be doing through January. There's new data through the American Community Survey coming out in mid-December. And so we felt that it was important to incorporate the most current information that we will have. And so that's why we've pushed the analysis through January, so we can incorporate that most recent year that's gonna be coming out. And then we're proposing a draft report in February and then a final report in early March and, uh, presentation. I think that timing is to be determined, but in March or April. Next slide. And so, basically, what, you know, in light of this, kind of knowing what it is that we've been tasked to look at, we'd just like to take a minute for you guys to provide some feedback to us responding to some of these questions, you know, really helping us know what do you need from the study, um, you know, what issues or concerns have you observed in the local market that we, you know, that you would like to know more about through this study, really what you hope to learn. Um, that's really gonna help us frame some of this analysis and outreach that we do.
Do you have any, uh, questions you'd like to direct them or any thoughts with the, the questions that are proposed?
One question that comes to mind, you were mentioning different types of analysis for housing needs. Um, are temporary and or seasonal housing needs a nuanced part of that analysis? Um, or is that grouped into a typical rental or short-term rental?
Typically temporary or seasonal, no, those, so are you talking about seasonal employees or are you talking about seasonal visitors like short-term rental occupants?
Seasonal employees, just with park adjacency, increased traffic at nearby resorts, skiing, et cetera. I would just anticipate that that's going to be a future flex point for Columbia Falls.
Okay, yeah, I know, typically, we look at seasonal employment, um, cause it, it, um, as its own segment.
Great. I think, yeah, that would be important to see from my perspective.
Sam or Mark? Um, this is Darren. I'll just make a comment to the, you know, what issues or concerns have you observed in the local housing market? Uh, as someone who has business with over sixty employees, um, we hear anecdotally from them all the time about how tough the housing market is. Um, and it's nice, it'd be nice to have some hard numbers, um, to come out of that. I can see that, that there are other folks, um, in different industries who don't see those concerns as well, so I'd like to know the anecdotal evidence I see is correct or not. Um, but I think talking to a lot of business owners, um, it's very hard for all of our employees to find houses.
I think, you know, and piggybacking on that, I think it's also in what I'm understanding through your studies, you will be breaking out different, um, financial levels, like family incomes, um, just because I feel like the housing that we do see moving is not necessarily associated with as many people that have work based here in our valley, but come to live and work in our valley. We're seeing a lot of jobs to do that. Uh, so I think that's a, that'll be a differentiator in terms of the, just, is it a local-based income or is it a national-based income? Uh, during the pandemic, it's gonna change how the housing market looks like. I think the other one for me is not understanding how some of these housing studies can incorporate or have some forecasting to, we're talking about the houses that are going to be lived in by people that are calling their home, but we see a disproportionate number of our houses that have, at a late, have been purchased that are being moved into short-term rentals and they're not necessarily housing units. And I'm curious, like, is there any pro forma or statistics out there of, of an area like ours as it grows for every house that actually lives by a, a family? We have to build a second home to accommodate the perspective of the area. I'm curious about what that is.
Yes. Yeah, no, and that's helpful. We will definitely take a look at short-term rentals and changes, and, uh, to your question, uh, in general, uh, yes, that is. Yeah. Okay.
Uh, Mark, do you have any comments before we move on?
You guys have covered most biggest concerns. It's seeing what those numbers look like. We did have a presentation by the EDR about a month or two ago that showed average prices in Columbia Falls for homes, how they actually compare to the average annual family incomes here. That gap is well over thirty percent. Um, I wanna try to get a feeling of what's driving that, that gap. A lack of any important information. Interested to see what comes forward. See what's running.
I lost the very last part of that sentence. I heard, uh, what is, wanting to know what is driving the gap.
Uh, I would like to see what those short-term rentals and investment properties, how much of the market that's making, how much of the driving that is as well.
Okay.
And I think not just from an STR perspective, but also a primary versus secondary tertiary residences.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm sure that's also a group as part of your data, but I think that would also be equally telling.
Okay. Great. Great. Super helpful. Anything else? Need to move on?
I think that's all from the board right now. Please continue your presentation.
All right, thanks. Um, and so, well, I, I might turn this part over to Andrew. Um, you know, why, why we're here today too is to talk about not only what we're doing, but also what we're going to be looking at you guys to help us with. Um, some of the, the roles, tasks, and timing that we have for this project. So I will let Andrew talk to our local data needs and interviews.
Sure, yeah, thanks, Wendy. Um, so there, there is a bit of, uh, data that we do need, um, from the city, and certainly, um, a, a lot of the additional information we'll get through interviews. Um, I, I had the good fortune to be in the valley a few weeks ago, and so, um, uh, Caleb and Eric and, and Susan already got me a lot of information. Um, including, uh, building permits back to the start of the calendar year twenty-seventeen, so, uh, thank you, Caleb, for, um, getting that to us so quickly. Uh, as well as, uh, information and mapping on your, uh, vacant parcels within your, um, current boundary. So, um, thank you again, Caleb. Um, in, in those, uh, well, uh, there, there are a couple of other things, um, that didn't make it onto the slide that I, I have talked, um, to staff a little bit about, uh, one being what you guys just raised on short-term rental. Um, counts, uh, so, so we will reach back out to staff, uh, on that one, and then also just confirming the, um, current inventory of homes that are restricted in some way in terms of the price, for example. Um, so, so we'll reach out to staff on that, um, and, and we should be able to get that piece covered just with staff. Um, more importantly, um, for you guys, uh, cer- certainly, if you can think of any other information, um, pl- please, um, send it to staff to get it to us. But the, the interview components here are important, and we do have some names, um, of local real estate professionals, uh, in Columbia Falls, working in Columbia Falls in the RE/MAX office, uh, so, so if there are other real estate professionals, realtors, that you know of or you think would be helpful for us to talk to, if you could send their contact information along to Eric, that would be great. Um, we also, uh, are at least aware of, uh, you know, some of the primary players in the development, building realm, um, you know, whether it's Terry Holmes or it's, um, Nick Ruiz, um, the folks who built the Highline Apartments. Um, but if there are others in the valley that you think would be important for us to speak with, um, again, please, um, send those over to Eric and we can add them to our list. Uh, you know, if that's just other contractors in the valley that's slank or martel or Denman Construction, you know, wh- whomever you think we should be talking to, uh, as it relates to Columbia Falls, that would be helpful. Um, and, and Sarah will talk a little bit more about the, uh, employer survey, but in addition to getting information through the, the survey instrument, um, speaking with really large employers, uh, i- in the area is gonna be important. So just a few examples on the screen, whether it's the school district or Wathawzer or FH Stoltz, um, you know, whomever you think we should be speaking with, that there are really large employers, that would be helpful. Um, we know there are some key stakeholders, uh, on, you know, kind of on the housing side, Habitat or the Community and Land Trust, um, but would be curious, um, if there are other stakeholders you think we should be reaching out to, uh, as part of this process, and, and certainly, um, you know, that could be tonight, or again, uh, i- if it's after the meeting, that would be, I think, easiest would be through. And I think, I think that covers most of the, at least upfront data needs that, that we know of right now, and more may come up.
Oh, that's fine.
Um, so Andrew mentioned the employer survey, and we'd like to get it online by mid-October and have it in the field through early November. Um, employers in the community can be a really excellent resource, not only for understanding what their needs are, but also, you know, understanding the needs of their staff and some of the struggles that they have on sort of both sides of that. Um, we have done these employer surveys in numerous different communities, so we can start with a few questions that we usually work with. Um, but we will be asking for your feedback through the process, and in particular, we're gonna be asking for you all to help distribute the employer survey, being on the ground out there, working with the chamber, maybe emailing employers directly, um, you know, really getting the word out to make sure that employers know that this is out there, that, but also that they sort of understand, you know, the valuable input they can provide into this needs assessment process. Um, you know, some of the things that we ask are, you know, challenges they have, hiring, how many unfilled jobs they have, what the perceptions are around commuting, um, you know, we can also get at seasonal employment as part of this to see some of the seasonal employment trends that you asked about earlier. Um, so you know, we can really get a lot of great information out of this, and the key part is working with you all to make sure that we have a lot of employers participating. Um, you know, just thinking sort of higher level, and we're not gonna go through, you know, an entire survey right now. Um, but just a couple higher level questions. Uh, one, what challenges have you observed, and, um, what do you hope to learn from employers as related to staffing and housing? Um, if anyone wants to provide a little feedback now, that would be excellent, but otherwise, we can circle back.
Feedback there right now? Wait, I see no feedback from the board right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And so then, um, finally, the kind of the last statement to, to, to provide, you know, to make regarding your future involvement. Um, we do have planned meetings and deliverables, obviously, as part of this project. Um, one is we expect to have the draft study, um, submitted early February, in which case we will be wanting to have another joint session, kind of like what we do now, um, to discuss. Well, well, so let me step back. So, so we'll release the draft. We will, um, get your input on the draft before we finalize it, and then when we do a final, we are going to do a pre, a public presentation with that. And so that would be in a, in a public forum. Um, but we would expect your input and involvement in giving us feedback on the draft before it comes final. But we would expect your input and involvement in giving us feedback on the draft before it comes final and then. Obviously, your. Your attendance at the presentation. Next slide. And so this, well, this is just the timeline. This is actually in the. Scope of work that we had submitted, so. Pretty much what we just talked about, so we can go next. And so our next steps. Next week, we're going to be getting a draft employer survey out, and so we'll allow all of you guys to take a look at that. We actually already heard some, you know, some of you talking about some of the issues that we'll be sure to include in there. And we need to finalize this survey by early October so that we can be sure to get it in the field up and running by mid October. Again, if you can get any contact information for interviews to Eric, that would be great. If there's anyone we absolutely have to talk to, we would love to know. And then obviously, reach out to us, our consultant team anytime with questions or comments or, you know, anything that comes up would be great. And our contact information is here, so. I think that's it. Next slide. Questions, comments? That went pretty quick.
And so, is there any questions or comments from board here before we open it up to the general public? Any questions they may have?
So a quick question for you, as you're going through these employer surveys, are you targeting primarily employers in the five nine nine one two area, excuse me, zip code? How do we account for remote workers, your workers you were working? For businesses and domiciled cows that are remote working on these falls? How are you going to account for that services?
Yeah, and and so, yes, we were intending that the employer survey would be targeting employers in your. The zip code area. We do have information I I from. The work that I did in Whitefish to at least understand. The impact of the employment up there and kind of the cross commuting that's happening there as well. No, we have not distributed employer survey down to Kalispell. We do have secondary data sources that help us understand that cross commuting and the extent to which. Your residents are working in those other communities. And so that was our intent was to use the employer survey really to get the detail. Get into the detail as to why employers, you know, more in your immediate area are having, you know, either having trouble filling jobs or what what kind of issues they are facing or not. As the fact may be. And then use that to pair with the secondary data and information we do have on the cross commuting and and the influence of the other areas outside of this region.
Justin or Sam? Any questions right now?
I think my only thought kind of pertains to that. Just the housing side, I think of. There are a couple of players that are on this end of the valley, specifically the National Park Service and the Forest Service that have pretty large presence. And have a number of employees that are living in our community, maybe worse than they live in Kalispell community.
Okay.
They might be a unique employer just because they're they're to the east of us. So they're a pretty small population area, but a lot of their employees would look to live here first and foremost before they would look anywhere else about.
Okay. No, and that would be, yeah, if you know, if we need to capture them in this survey. Great, and especially if you have a contact.
Justin, any thoughts right now?
More of a procedural question, you know, where are the draft surveys, for example, about the city person that will disseminate those for the board? Is there more of a collective email correspondence that we should anticipate? How is the best way to communicate information during the non-public periods? Of passing this information out, you know, of course, get to meet once a month, right? We receive a couple of draft surveys at times like on a weekly basis.
Right, well, that's and I'll work with Eric on that. So in in essence. You know, I'm the primary contact for our team with Eric and then Eric's the primary contact for you guys for everything else through this project. And so I don't know if he wants to talk to that now or.
If you. Sure, Wendy, if you have items like drafts that you want me to run, run by the commission, I can. Basically create an email spread and email our commission and. You know, get their comment and com- comments and get it back to you, just like if they have. Employers or people that they think we should reach out to with with these surveys. But I assume these surveys are going. Going to be. Email to the employers or 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 are you thinking it's going to be a paper copy hand delivered?
No, 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 we'll have, well, it'll be online. Yeah, we'll have an online link.
If I may, a question for Eric, and this is also for the public. If they have ideas after tonight about other people that they think that should be interviewed, I want the best way for them to. They email directly, they email the city. How do you want that communication to get funneled to you so that all the public's ideas can get everybody?
Probably sending it. To. I guess Caleb and then Caleb can basically. Put it together and and get it to me in a big batch and then we can get it to to the consultants.
And Caleb, is your email on the website for the public to find?
Yes, it is. It's a little deep. Let me just suggest that, let us take a look at that because. Maybe what we can do is create something on the city website that is like a portal. So people aren't looking for someone's email. And the other thing I would suggest that we'll have to look at. Certainly getting it on the website, but. If I'm an employer and I get this random email, I probably hit the leak. So we need to do some some. Public announcements or something so we can. People can understand what they're getting, because we're not going to be able to reach out to everybody personally. So. Let us take that kind of piece of the. Of how we're going to get the information so it goes to where it needs to go before it gets to the consultant and also. Advertise this a little bit or it'll just go, it'll go away.
Great, so public understand there'll be a process, we're putting this together, it'll be on the webpage soon. So that you can. Give comments past tonight.
Yes, my only other comment also pertained just going back to some of the local data I captured. I think we were talking about building permits and vacant land within the city. Given the nature of Columbia Falls, there's. We would. We run the risk of not capturing the real picture of the last couple of years if we excluded to our city limits only. I look at building permits or septic permits that have. Been installed within the recent past. That are fairly adjacent to our. To our city boundary. We said, I think there's. The perception is there's a lot of homes that have been built adjacent to Columbia Falls that have expanded our population, but they're not a safe part of our city population. When it comes to the boundary, so I I fear. Our building permits probably look. Crazy. And we don't have a degree, a lot of vacant land within our city, but we have seen a lot of construction adjacent.
So my question for that to get information on like building permits or development that's been happening, say, outside your boundaries. But perhaps within like the zip code area that we're talking about, is that where we would have to go to the county? Or is that information that you guys would be able to get?
That would be county information. Yeah, we do not have jurisdiction over there. The county also does not have a building department. Yeah, so there there's no building permits required for. Residential projects, I believe it's it's all through the state. They might be only doing commercial.
That's what I think, yeah. You, an accurate attempt at it might be trying to find new septic. The best way to be, the health department has to do all the septic permits.
We'll just have to reach out and see if they have data that we can, we can grab. Yeah, they they. I know that they're. Their G I S like. As septics, but I don't know that you can break it out regionally.
Sure.
Being able to capture and tell that story a little more accurately, I think would be better.
Yeah, no, that's great and we'll work with, yeah, we'll work with Eric to to do that because we agree.
Anything else before we go to a public comment? And I think the staff, will we have a public comment?
I'm sure Eric's already communicated it, but I think it's important they know exactly what the boundaries of the interlocal area were. Before that we operated under for so long, so it's not just city limits, it's. City limits plus that donut area that was in existence for many years.
Yeah, Wendy Wendy and I spoke about this and Andrew as well and. In there. And and Wendy can probably elaborate on this better than I can, but we have really good data from census for. Our city limits boundary because it's defined in the census, but when we start breaking out. The the census blocks around the city, it becomes. Cumbersome to to work it. And so there's going to kind of be a balance that. Wendy's going to try to do to. Work work with those challenges on kind of our our area.
Yeah, yeah, and Eric's absolutely right. So we, you know, we have secondary data, right? But it's only available in certain geographic ranges. And so to the extent that we can match, you know, those. Those boundaries from the secondary data, American Community Survey, to, you know, our study area, the better. It also helps with jobs information, et cetera, because we usually go to the state and they have the same boundary. Boundaries in place as the census does that they can pull data. So. So that's why, you know, we were wanting to look at, you know, the whole, say, zip code, because that allows us to pull in the wide region kind of around you guys. To take a look at some of these other trends that are happening outside to do that. That being said, yeah, you know, we can, we'll take a closer look at, you know, the city limits in the donut area and just see what we have. But that being said, I think we're going to capture what you guys have been talking about in the region that we've proposed. But obviously, we'll be sensitive to that when we when we look at the data.
All right, seeing nothing else from the board or the staff at this time. If the public has any questions or comments. You can come up here, give us your name and address and speak as clearly as you can to make sure that we can hear it, but also they can hear it with a little bit of echo. So if anyone has a question or comment, please come forward and give it to us. There, Shirley. I knew you were talking, as I expected. Please continue.
Derek Popeye and I am a resident of rural Columbia Falls and I'm also. On the board for the Everton Neighborhood Association. In regards to this last topic, as far, I'm still a little unclear about what Eric. What and and Wendy were saying, but it sounds like the donut is going to be included as much as possible. In this survey, is that, am I understanding that?
We're going to try to collect the the data, census data from not only the city limits, but an an area outside. To help us look at the trends and. And and what's happening in and around the city.
Okay, and part of why I'm bringing that up, a couple of reasons, one is. That I've I've always thought that it's crucial. To remember the subdivisions. That have been approved by the city council over the last two or three years. That are, I think, primarily within the donut area. But they've not, the development has not begun on this, but. Somehow I think that's important to feed into all of this information to know. That. There are some subdivisions that have been included. The other piece of that is connected with. The topic of the vacant land that's available, and I'm wondering if. When they look at the vacant land. If that is going to include land in the donut area that they'll be looking at.
I don't have a clear answer on that, Shirley. We'll probably need to discuss that with Wendy, how far. Out we we look and it'll kind of just depend. As they start to put their their data together, what we what we need to look at in in our donut area, I mean. We definitely don't need to. Be going to Hungry Horse or up the north port to be looking at vacant lands, but probably close adjacency to the city we probably look at.
And, right, and you realize that's exactly what I'm getting at. Yeah, just within the donut area, certainly not.
Yeah, but I, you know, it's. Yeah, it's. Obviously, we'll be looking at. At adjacent areas to the city.
Okay, and then one of the things I really like about the growth policy is all of that. Those additional sections that emphasize the, when you're looking at. Development, looking at growth, that you also consider the type of land it is, whether it's appropriate for housing. Environmental issues and everything, is that something?
Not not in the housing study, but it's in the growth policy and three eighty two. This is, this is just one small component. Of the growth policy. And so there's economics, there's environment, there's. Gravels, there's there's all the whole parameter, more more than the original growth policy that we have.
Okay, so that will eventually. Get into both of them, okay. And Darren, I really appreciate you asking the question about public involvement. Because I was sitting there getting a little tense about that, because as I look at the list of people to be interviewed. There's pretty much nothing about the public, about any public anybody. So I appreciate you bringing that up and how we might be able to have some. Input in the process. But then for clarification. I'm I'm saying only tonight and then the final report that the public would have any opportunity to even. Know what's going on as far as the housing assessment. Are there other points in these next few months that the public would be informed?
As we do our outreach. Whether it's going to the Chamber of Commerce or sending out employee surveys. But a lot of this is just going to be data crunching. By the consultants to kind of formulate with what this is and so. And then as they get the draft, yeah, we can start disseminating.
And if I may speak to that just a minute, this is a reminder to all of us that this is just one piece of this whole. S B three eighty two puzzle that we're giving them data, they're fronthand, they're going to report back to us and then we can use this data, this report. To inform all the next steps. So this is a very important step, but let's not get bought down and beaten by there. We're going to get as much information as we can, they're going to distill it. And then there's all the other steps to go through, getting it capitalized in those things that that this doesn't necessarily deal with growth policy, it gets used to. Inform the next steps. Does that make sense? And did I?
Yeah.
Accurately describe that?
Yeah, so so I'm basically, because this is all data driven. That that the public. Involvement or, yeah, that we would need to provide some data.
Yes.
To the.
Correct. The data is census data, it's employment data, it's data coming from. From sources that have. From sources that have. Um. Have uh experience in housing and employment and those sorts of things. So that's really. What the consultants are looking for as they start to put this together.
Mm hmm.
Okay, that's helpful. Um. Mr. Shreves, I really appreciate your suggestions for um the website and having explicitly. Um play for all of this information for the public to. Observe that that will be very helpful, because I know. I had any, I've kind of learned to navigate the website because there's any, there's a lot of. To know public that is growing later and don't want to give them, so I appreciate.
Hopefully, that's something we can do. I there's an idea, well, I'll talk to the tech people, but I think it's at some point.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Okay, um. Uh. Okay, one of the things that I don't know if this is in this or not, that that I we hear over and over and over again, that. If there's more housing available than the price, the rent or the price of housing will go down. And I. Really want some data on that. I want somebody to show me. And I don't know if that's part of this um survey or not, but I've seen other people say, oh, that doesn't really. So um anyway, I'm just throwing that out. There's an idea. I'm wondering if the slide, if these slides. Will be available, if maybe they could be in that like um.
Yeah, yeah, I know this, we can definitely make the slides available, and we will absolutely be looking at the market forces that are working to. How is housing to be so expensive? Because um, you know, quite honestly, um. It's more than just volume. There's a lot of other factors going on. And so we definitely will be looking at that and helping to provide the information that you guys need to understand what's really affecting your market and what's going on.
Great. Um final question is, um will there be a survey of current city services and. Projections of what city services might be available within this next twenty years? Could the services will match the projection for the housing?
Three eighty-two requires us to do um our capital improvements plans for. Our sewer and water services, and then there's a transportation element of three eighty-two as well. That looks at the transportation networks. So yes, the answer to your question. But it's not part of the.
Not part of this.
This is a separate standalone, and those others are also would be standalone studies.
Okay, okay, and and will those studies be based upon. Updated um updated information, I mean fairly current information from. I know sometimes the transportation plan was done just a few years ago, but I don't know how. We think the um the service, city services, the sewer and water, how we can bad.
Yeah, those are not, those are just turning five years old, so our our plans are pretty pretty current.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Is there anyone else who'd like to come up and give some questions or comments?
Thank you. I'm Gary Hall, former, let's see, I moved here in four, three distances in the community and. I'm now currently living in the Donut. It has gone away, but yet. Uh if the city wants to annex, if somebody requests to annex state, and then of course. It would come back here and, but we have no voice because we can't vote on those that make the decision over that. So. It's a slight concern. Um we've had some adversarial relationships with the city before. We don't want that. Uh last time we had an amazing meeting with the county planning. Uh they set it up specifically to deal with some of their issues, but also to hear from Columbia Falls. Residents on what we would like to see in the Donut. It was amazing. And we'll probably end up. Uh the county will probably end up adopting what the current zoning is outside of city limit. But they've given us an opportunity to give input. And I'm just hoping we can have a continued working relationship with you all. Um because again, even though we're in the Donut, we also will be. Um. You know, the zoning will imply, you know, if if someone is to require early cross certification, so. We're concerned we want to be a part of the process. This housing um. Uh project for Columbia Falls is important for you all to deal with, but we just want to continue to be a part of it. So we want to get information and be a part of this process. So thank you for all of what you're doing, you're doing and committing to this process and. Uh we want to continue communication and um work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Bur. I live in five sixty Calvin Road in Columbia Falls, not out in the Donut. Um. I do share Shirley's concern about the public input. Uh spent a lot of time on surveys to employers and. Big employers and that type of thing. Certainly, you you should introduce some local residents. Even if it's a random survey, somehow I volunteer for it, put my name down, I'll do an interview. Um. You gotta get some public input, because it just isn't employers. There's quality of life and people want to be able to share that. Second thing I'd say is, you said, don't get too wrapped up in this. This is just one segment of this whole process. But it's a big segment. And in the last, I've been several meetings for this and. Each one, somebody said, well, don't get too hung up on the definition, or don't get too hung up on this. Well, we're gonna get hung up because when the unpacked comes together and it's a bunch of hangups. I think I think you guys should, you know, be cognizant of that. It is a little part, but a bunch of little parts make. The big engine that runs it, okay? Uh last thing or third thing I I'd mention here is um. If this uh the the group doing this is gonna take into account, and if there's any way to identify second homes. Because there's a situation where, just like the RBOs, those are out of. They're out of the housing market and they're they're they sit idle for four or five months a year when when the second homeowner isn't here. And I don't know that that anything can ever be done about it. We're all. If it's portable, able to have a a uh a second home. And that is all I have. Um thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
And I'll just comment really quick. Yes, absolutely. We are going to be looking at the extent of your housing inventory that's. Occupied by a primary resident, so someone who's there year round versus someone who owns it as a second home. So we will absolutely be looking at that dynamic.
Thank you, Wendy.
Um my name is Jean Flannigan. Yeah, I live at twenty-four Dino and I'm in the city. I recently, within the last couple of years, um purchased my home. I'm concerned about uh the Senate bill three eight two. You've got a great challenge ahead of you because you need to stay within uh the uh you're you're looking at people that. Uh have to adhere to the thirty percent of their income on housing. So that that's a. That's a big challenge because um most of the mortgage lenders right now, they're allowing more of that. By more like thirty-five or forty percent because it's so difficult to qualify. And was very difficult for me to qualify, but I did. Uh so there's, uh and I would ask you maybe uh when you're doing your. Survey to include mortgage lenders in in that survey because they have a lot of data that's really useful. Uh and there's been a lot of folks, well, not necessarily last year, but the last three or four years. Um that have purchased houses within the city. Um so I I would ask you to, you know, consider. Um the mortgage lenders in that, you know, survey. Um it's also um. I have a friend, I have actually several friends that are real estate folks, and they deal with this all the time. One of my friends posts her um her statistics weekly on Facebook. And she said last week that the median price for a home in the Whitehead Valley is four hundred. Five hundred and forty K or five hundred and forty thousand for a three bedroom house. And this is valleywide. Okay, so um. I doubt that there's very many people that make over, you know, uh that that can qualify that, that make under a hundred. Hundred thousand dollars a year. I don't know anybody. Uh none of my friends make that much money. I don't know. So you're looking at folks moving in to the area that are Vermont State maybe. I don't know. But oh, that's that's pretty crazy. And then one last thing, um Bozeman has a great. Um it's a it's a new, um they introduced uh having employees uh. Live in housing that employers provide. I mean, employers are actually building the housing, and I know there's a couple of folks. Here that are business people that have actually done that. Thank you very much for doing that, and that allows a great restaurant. Uh Mr. Fisher uh to operate and and employees live really close there, and I think that's wonderful, but. Can there be any kind of a of of, can you maybe pressure the legislature or. Can there be some kind of a tax for local businesses to provide some housing, some kind of an incentive? Uh for for uh local housing for these folks, because um it's it's almost impossible uh for people. During the summer to find a place to live. I mean, I I know, um not personally, but I know of folks that are living in their cars. During the summer because they can't find a housing. So that would that would be really helpful to simply include that, you know, um. In in the survey. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, I'm just wondering if Meadow Lake is a part of the survey process, uh being that they pay for city sewer and water. I'm not sure if they're included in that, but just a question I have.
Thank you, Eric, to consider after the whole Donut area and the the region.
They would be, yeah, part of the regional statistics for sure.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brooke again. I live at thirteen oh six Third Avenue in Columbia Falls. Um just a few quick comments. I've worked with Wendy. I was working for the same white fish as her work up in there. She's amazing. Uh very great hands. We're really lucky. We're looking on this. Um so I just I just wanted to start from for that. Also offer, I've been working at, I'm with the Chauvin, he's acting director. For the past six months, we've been going through a bit of a rocky time, if anyone has seen that recently.
Yes.
Um but we're really excited to work and stabilize um everything that's happened. There's there's a lot of internal work going on. Um and and so first, I'd just like to offer um part of our jurisdiction um extent into Columbia Falls. Um for vouchers vouchers that we're allowed to offer in certain federal programs. Uh we're more than happy to work with Wendy. Um I know a lot of the people you're talking about. And more than happy to work with Wendy to connect her to people to get interviews, et cetera. Um excited about this happening. Um. And then um, you know, just thinking about strategy for a couple of things I'd like to support. Um and and echo what people said, I think sometimes looking about housing, uh we're in such crisis with housing. Um that leads us to see any um open lands uh at. Oh, we can use this for housing. Um I would encourage us to think through an overall strategy of really valuing uh. Uh special agricultural and ecological lands um in the greater ecosystem that we need to call home. Um and to make sure that we're really looking at infill um development and really, really think that through and doing our best to prioritize. Um incremental development. Uh we're thinking through our land use policy of. Uh you know, if we can have a bunch of twelve classes, uh man, that would be great. Um if we could really enable local, small scale developers and. Um local investments, uh I think, thinking about the way that that client is already distributed to uh is really useful. Um yeah, so I'm I'm really excited about this information, so we can think through the strategy. Um but ultimately just and and really excited about the stuff that we want to lend lend a hand in any way that I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the audience? Three, two, one. All right, I think we finished our public comment. Um Wendy, do you have any other um comments, thoughts for us before we wrap this meeting up? Or anything that you need from us immediately?
I don't think so. Um I kind of laid that out in the next steps. Um I think there's some great information we just got from the public that I have some notes here. That I'll be talking to Eric about. Um you know, about how to incorporate some of the things that were brought up. Um I'm. Yeah, uh just excited to get going. I mean, I think, yeah, this has been a great discussion, and so um. We have a good start to be able to start framing what it is we're gonna be doing and how to pull together the employer survey and. Um how to move this forward. So that's great. Thank you.
Great, yeah. Um we're all really looking forward to this. And so we'll be getting employer draft, employer survey, we'll go to Eric, and it'll come to us. In the near future, and let's say hopefully by early to mid next week, there'll be something on the website where the public will have a. Portal, I'm not putting you on the spot for a date, but let's say by mid next week. Um I think they should be able to to whip that together, and I'm sure there are some members of our audience who, if they don't find that, will be calling. I have great faith in our public that they will politely harass you if they don't have the information.
Right.
Um I see no other business before this council, and with that, entertaining motion, good journey. Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sarah.
Yeah, everyone.
Thank you.